You need to come to order, call roll. I'm sorry. Do over.
Yeah, over.
You need to come to order, call roll.
Mayor Manning.
President.
Councilman Patricelli.
Present.
Councilman McGroudy.
Present.
Please read the minutes from our last meeting.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we discuss the minutes of the previous meeting.
I second that.
Accepting this is, call roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
Favor, course wants his committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately tonight, we've had to postpone our presentation that was scheduled for the Building and Co Department due to illness in the family for Paula Bossier from the Building Department. So we will be rescheduling that for sometime next month. But in two weeks from tonight, we will have the presentation from the Finance Department, which will go over the operations of the department and its staff in 2018, and the final closeout numbers for 2018's finances. So two weeks from tonight will be the financial report for 2018.
And go over it?
No, we'll probably push that into May. Paul's is a little bit more lengthy with some statistics, so we'll have him get into that then. But we do still have the Planning and Community Revitalization Department, so we might slide that schedule one way or the other.
Gotcha.
I'll have some dates for everyone for the next one.
All right. Does that bring us to your own business? Have any?
We do. In old business, we have a public hearing. Public hearing for the purpose of hearing those persons that wish to be heard regarding proposed local law number three for the year 2019. A local law to amend Chapter 108 of the Code of the City of Waterbury.
Okay, open the public hearing. Can we introduce it and start the process?
So this local law is an update to the fees. The main reason for this is a change in the fees for the dog impoundments from $67 to $70 at the Hudson Mohawk Humane Society. They set the rates for us, and they've increased it from $67 to $70. So that is the cost that we pay, so that is the cost that we charge to those owners of dogs that are impounded.
Can we get the law so we can charge it?
Correct.
Just a contract agreement, right?
Great.
Okay, so what we're hearing common on tonight is we're changing our law just to be in concert with what we're getting charged with by Humane Society to put dogs up and we catch them on the streets. Anyone want to talk about that?
Do we?
Oh shit.
Do we? Why don't we charge more than the $70 due to the fact that we have our officers have to bring those dogs down to the kennels?
Well, I mean, you could certainly legislate and increase the fees. I know that from looking at Coho's law, I believe they charge a fee of, and I'm just, I believe it's like $100 for the first impoundment, and then $200 for the second impoundment, could be more. The issue that you have is there's some times where, and when we enacted this law previously, I had spoken with Chief Boycebird about the amount of time that a dog is at the society. So if you charge $100, okay, they charge a daily fee. Okay, so once an owner of a dog realizes that their dog is impounded, they have to come to the City of Waterbury. They have to wait the statutory redemption period, and then they pay the City of Waterbury the fee. But if you pay $100, okay, the dog could be there for five days at $70, you know, a day or $67 a day. So that's why we decided to do it per day. To be equal to what is being charged by the society. But you certainly can increase the fees for that. But if you leave it at a flat rate or a flat fee, you know, depending upon what that amount is, the city may be losing money by paying the society for what they charge us.
I was thinking like more of in addition to $75 a day rather than $70, so that the city's reimbursed for the time spent by staff. But this is fine. I'm just throwing that out there.
Could the wording be in place that there's no specific amount that is charged contingent upon the fee charged by, then we don't have to worry about this next year or two years and every year after this?
Yeah, that's the thing. I mean, as you can tell, I mean, we've increased it every time that, you know.
And you're talking, what, a few dollars this time from $67 to?
Yeah, it's been increased over the year, you know, a few dollars.
It seems a waste of time.
See, the controlling statute is under the Agriculture and Markets Law, and, you know, they have certain, you know, it's up to the municipality, and the municipality has discretion to set that fee. So just using Coho's as an example of they charge a certain fee for a first impoundment, so, you know, certainly open for, you know, further suggestions, and we can look at it further. But for the purposes of moving forward, I think it's appropriate that we amend it this way, and then we can look at it again, you know, in the meantime.
Yeah. In hindsight, it's not bad to have you have the look at it each year. We're gonna have another example of not having a look, that's how I mean, sure. And you fall behind. But do you want to, do you guys want to talk on it? Anybody got a dog?
I've already caught two.
Who's impounding the dog? You may say. Now, who is impounding them and what we taking them to?
Police Department.
Well, we haven't. Currently, the Police Department.
They're putting them in the Cruisers?
Yeah. I've been doing that.
Ron Boycebird was always against that. Yeah, well, we did have a guy with a special vehicle, but.
Thirty-five thousand a year. Twenty hours a week.
All right, are we okay with this? Is it this round?
Yes.
All right, we'll close the public commentary. And move on to new business.
Okay. In new business, we have local law number three for the year 2019. A local law to amend Chapter 108 of the Code of the City of Waterbury.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on this local law.
I second that.
We'll have call for discussion, but we'll make a note that we had no minimal public comment, and a couple of comments up here about revising this possibly for next time around. Any other discussion? Okay, Scott, call roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Up next, we have ordinance number 1997. An ordinance of the City of Waterbury providing that Chapter 127, Building Construction and Fire Prevention of the Code of the City of Waterbury be amended.
I'd like to make a motion to accept it. Make a motion to accept ordinance number 1997 as written.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
So as indicated, this is an ordinance that amends Chapter 127 of the Code of the City of Waterbury, specifically Section 127-5B, Schedule of Fees. So I was approached by the Building Department a few months back, and they had requested certain amendments to fees for certain types of permits and other activities. So essentially, the ordinance has been provided to members of the council. For an example, if one were to go to the Building Department and ask for a permit for interior demolition, previously, the cost would be $50 for that fee. As indicated in the proposed ordinance, the fee would be 1% of the cost of the project or minimum of $50. So as you can see, the underlying sections are what the changes are, and the cross-out sections are what's being deleted.
Scott, call roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Up next, we have ordinance number 1998. An ordinance of the City of Waterbury providing that Chapter 244, Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of the City of Waterbury be amended.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on the ordinance 1998.
I second that.
Discussion on this?
So this corresponds with a later resolution regarding street excavation and digs in the public right-of-way. This particular ordinance changes the fee, which again is in the updated policy. The fee will now be $150 for the permit for each dig, and $3 per square foot for each dig. This is in line with the other municipalities as to what they have as well.
Would you subscribe to dig? To be more like water runs?
Yep, so if somebody wants to put in a water lateral, they pay $150 for the permit, and then for however big the hole was that they dug and had to mediate would be $3 per square foot, which would be tacked on after the work is done.
And in relation to the sidewalks?
Same for the sidewalk. So if they dig anywhere in the public right-of-way, it would be the same thing. So one of the other things this does is encourage smaller digs in certain areas. That way, there's not as big of patches and things like that causing issues.
I don't understand what the $3 per square foot is for.
The size of the hole.
Hey, when you're paying for a permit, it's up to the whoever doing the job to replace whatever there with its concrete or by top or whatnot. So why should they give additional fee?
It's not just a replacement, it's to keep, as Jeremy said, have some incentive to keep this hole small as possible. So if you paid $150, you could dig a 20-foot hole, and for $150, Don digs a 3-foot hole.
Sure, I can do that. Sure, there's always utilities and whatever related.
Remember when I, we did my, or my house, they did a water line, and they didn't have that.
Which box?
Yeah. And the hole was, the hole was all the way across the street and down and.
That's an exceptional case where it's sort of.
Well, remember, you would use that box, you know.
Somebody that don't have a box can't dig like me.
It's, uh.
Neither did he.
It's not just aimed at homeowners and contractors, it's also aimed at the utilities. So this helps control national grid as well.
Well, we'll see how it goes when they start complaining.
And Phil?
Nope.
Call roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Next, we have ordinance number 1999. An ordinance of the City of Waterbury providing that the Code of the City of Waterbury be amended by repealing Chapter 98, Advertising Materials.
I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance number 1999 as written.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yes, so Chapter 98 of the Code of the City of Waterbury is titled Advertising Materials. And recently, we looked at the older code, back in 1972, I believe, when it was first enacted. Basically, the law talked about the distribution of advertising materials and samples and penalties for those offenses. However, back in 2003, it was amended to add regulations for outdoor signs and displays. But we now have, as you know, our zoning ordinance was amended that has sign regulations. So there are provisions in this Chapter 98 that are, you know, in conflict with the sign regulations, and it's important to obviously have one, you know, law that deals with sign regulations as opposed to two. So we felt it would be appropriate to just entirely repeal Chapter 98, and that's the purpose of the ordinance.
Okay. Is there anything in it that we don't want to lose?
Well, I mean.
Of significance?
We've talked about, I think we've talked about this before. I mean, it talks about advertising materials. I know Don and I had spoken about this, about, you know, it's unlawful for any person to tack or place, says any sign, bill, poster, or other advertisement on private property. I don't, I can't recall when this was ever enforced. However, it just doesn't fit within, in my opinion, you know, the sign regulations. I think before they had sign regulations, they had this advertising materials ordinance, so. You know, if advertising becomes an issue where people start placing, you know, cards and advertisements and mailboxes and brushes and porches and things of that nature, then I think we probably could revisit the issue. But personally, I don't think that it's needed. But I think the main point of it is because we have sign regulations in our zoning ordinance, and this was amended to include those regulations back before we had, before we had sign regulations. So I think that's the purpose of it.
A lot of what it states about the advertising materials is really covered in signs. You can't post them in certain areas on poles and trees and things like that. So it's still, the sign code still addresses that. And you can't put any flyers in mailbox in any way, that's federal offense.
Covered.
For the council.
Okay. Include everything but, yeah, it's kind of like that, it's a federal offense. Okay, Scott, call roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
I'm in favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
Be in favor.
Next, we have Resolution Number 9601. Council, the City of Waterbury hereby authorizes and directs Scott O'Reilly, City Clerk, clerk to the council, to advertise once in the official newspaper of the city that sealed bids will be received by the City Clerk's Office of the City of Waterbury in Waterbury, New York, until 10:00 a.m. on Monday, April 22nd, for roadway resurfacing through the Consolidated Highway Improvement Program, or CHIPS.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on resolution.
I second that.
Discussion?
So this is our annual CHIPS paving. Now that the state budget has been passed, we can begin to move forward with this. We're looking to perform this work earlier this year, and we're also looking at it within a tighter timeframe, where all of this work would be completed prior to Memorial Day. One of the main reasons for that is, one of the areas that we'll be paving is 16th Street between Broadway and Second Avenue, which at this point, I would say is probably the worst section of street in the City of Waterbury. So we want to get that done quickly, get it out of the way, and certainly before Memorial Day parade, which passes right through there. But all of the streets that have been outlined in the documentation that the council has received, we have specked in here to be completed before that date. We have spoken to some that have bid before, and they feel that is easily accomplishable to be able to do it. They expect it to be about a one-week turnaround to be able to get this done. Some have stated even sooner, so. With all of the roadwork that we did last year, we limited it down a little bit, and of course, we put a tighter timeframe on to make sure that it gets done quickly.
Okay. Good? Call roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Next, we have Resolution Number 9602. Council, the City of Waterbury hereby authorizes and directs Scott O'Reilly, City Clerk, clerk to the council, to advertise once in the official newspaper of the city that sealed bids will be received by the City Clerk's Office in the City of Waterbury until 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, April 25th, for the Waterbury Energy Reduction Program, LED lighting project, for various sites and locations in the City of Waterbury.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 9602 as written.
And I'll second.
Discussion?
We've spoken about this project several times over the past few months. This is a NYSERTA grant that the city received for completion and award as a clean energy community. The city received $80,000 to complete a project that would reduce the carbon footprint, and will be replacing, with that money, will be replacing all of the city-owned lights in the city buildings, as well as city-owned street lights, with LED lights. So that replacement of those lights will not cost the city anything, it will be in line with the grant amount, but it will reduce the cost for energy consumption for the city. This is the bid specification for the project, putting it out to advertise, and our procurement requires us to bid for this project.
Hudson Shores Park?
Hudson Shores Park.
Park, yes. Call roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
Next, we have Resolution Number 9603. Council, the City of Waterbury determines that the proposed Waterbury Comprehensive Plan Project is a Type 2 action, and that no further action or review relative to this project is required by Seeker.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move on this resolution.
I second that.
Discussion?
Previously, the council approved the use of program income funds to update the city's comprehensive plan. This is the next step in the process. Since this is the comprehensive plan, is a planning study, it is considered a Type 2 action under Seeker, and therefore, there's no review, no further review necessary for this. And once, if this is approved by the council, we should have a RFP ready for the next meeting to be able to go out for this and begin that process.
I'm good?
Okay then, call roll.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
And next, we have Resolution Number 9604. Council, the City of Waterbury hereby approves and adopts the City of Waterbury Street Excavation Policy.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 9604 as written.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
As previously discussed, this updates and clarifies the language in the street excavation policy. One of the things is the fee that was previously mentioned. Also clarifies who to contact, how to proceed, and as well as the process for remediation of any digs that are done. So it talks about filling with concrete, the compaction, everything that's necessary to make sure that there's no confusion as to what needs to be done if you dig in the streets or sidewalks within the city.
Well written. Well written.
David Russell, Mark Katie, where both parts are.
It seemed like it covered everything.
The, there's a timeframe of notice before they can actually fill in. I mean, somebody has to actually.
Yeah, it states that it has to be inspected by either.
Or it gets ripped up.
Yes, by the highway supervisor or by the water supervisor before it can be done.
Yeah, just want to make sure it's, because that's the, you know, the eight o'clock at night film.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Call roll, Scott.
Councilman Patricelli?
In favor.
Councilman McGroudy?
In favor.
Mayor Manning?
In favor.
And Mr. Mayor, for the best of my knowledge, that's all we have in new business.
Okay. Appropriations accounting, we have nothing, but next week, we got Mike's report. Anything before public commentary?
Uh, lawn and leaf pickup is going to begin. So now that the snow is all gone, and depending on where you are, there's a lot of leaves on the ground. If you go through Hudson Shores Park, there's a lot of leaves on the ground, so you can start cleaning up your leaves and putting it, putting them in the bags. And also, next Saturday is the Keep the Leaf Deep Day. So that will be, we'll have a lot of volunteers out and about cleaning up public property. For those of you that are not available to clean up public property, we also encourage you to clean up your own property, and this is the beginning of a spring cleanup for the City of Waterbury. So it's a pretty big day. For those that do volunteer, there'll also be some refreshments afterwards around 11:30, 12 o'clock at the Dome. Please participate if you're available.
What time does it start?
Nine o'clock.
You said they're starting to pick up yardways tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Just to make the comment, I had a community forum last Saturday, was attended by about 30 residents. Went over a number of different items, a couple of suggestions. It took about two hours. I'm compiling a lot of the conversations and data right now, and I'll be able to bring that back to you. And most of it was in really, really great suggestions, and, you know, not a, not like a complaint session, but just overall comments that was pretty good for this. A couple of things I wanted to bring up about the, we had talked a couple of times about the 787 fence with the billboards, the signs and things like this, and I know we had a couple of conversations on it. I gave you a sort of like a idea on what we were thinking about moving out in front of the fence, and then you came up with a great idea about incorporating that in with the engineers or architects for the bike pit, bike paths. How's that been moving along?
Yes, if the council would like for me to move forward with that, I can certainly get in touch with the engineers for it. It seems, it seems like a good fit because they're dealing with that corridor already. And so also, they coordinate with DOT, so any of our coordination, I have to deal with DOT with the fence or the right-of-way in those areas, they'd be able to handle that and stuff. And I'm sure they'd be more than willing to take that.
One other thing added, are we discussing anything about potholes? Have they been, maybe addressed on a polling basis?
Yeah, so, I mean, the guys are out and about, they've been filling them in with cold patch for now because a lot of the plants are still closed.
They're still closed?
Yeah, the plant that we usually go to, they now opened a secondary plant, which is down in the port. So we have to modify our trucks to be able to pick up at the port to bring it back, because you have to have netting over the top to make sure that none of it. So we're in the process of doing that, so we've been using the cold patch up until this point. But if you, you can call either the clerk's office or the general manager's office. You can email myself or Scott to get it in. You keep a running tab on all the calls that we get for potholes. But of course, you know, the guys are out and about looking as well. But as always, they don't see every street, so our best reporters are the people that live in the city and that are driving through it. We know that it's bad, especially in certain areas, so if you see something, please let us know, and we'll be out there as quickly as possible to get it filled.
I think West Sand Lake was open.
They were not last week, but they may have opened this week, so I can get up there soon.
And what's the status now of the billboards, the issue with the billboards?
So the, in the code, it stated that all billboards would have to be removed five years or 60 months after the adoption of the code, which, that timeframe came up in September of 2018. So after reviewing that, I ordered the Building Department to send out violations for that, notifications on it. So they have been sent, and we've received a lot of feedback back. You know, I received a letter, I believe, the mayor has also, regarding our stuff. Currently, it states that the billboards are supposed to come down.
That's how this letter that you received?
No, that's how it's stated in the code right now.
Oh, right, yeah.
They should come down. But the letters that we received were.
Asking not to take them down.
Right, yeah. Are we going to revisit that, or are we going to discuss that, or is that something that we should discuss and look at?
It's in the code, so it would be a council decision to make any changes to that. I wasn't a part of the original adoption of the code, so I'm not sure of the reasoning behind why they were expected to come down, so.
Hundred minutes to that meeting, those meetings, and that maybe something that might explain it?
There definitely are.
Yes, there was.
That would help, at least that would help before you're making a decision, to be able to help ask for rationale and then kind of make a judgment call from there.
They have to know there was a committee that developed the zoning code.
Yeah. Could they be provided?
Uh, yeah, certainly.
I mean, not tomorrow, but Monday.
I believe so. I'm not sure if they're typed or just recorded. I know that they were recorded, so.
Okay. And one more thing is, as was discussed, this has been a complaint, I think, for the last few years, and it's always seems to be that, it's on 19th Street. I don't know if she contacted you today, but she, her mother did in the past. In front of Cruse's with the curb, they're always complaining about their tires going up against the curb and puncturing a tire.
So if they hit the curb with the tire, it pops?
It pops, and I believe it was when Chris, Chris Cruse, was complaining about it. She had Mark Leeson go up, and he was going to grind it or something. I don't know if that ever happened or not.
Okay. You take a look at that, I'm not.
You ever hear of it?
Find out if we can grind the granite curbs or something.
I don't know, I don't know how they go, but they're.
The entire street is granite curved.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, hard to grind the granite.
Huh?
Trying to hard to grind the granite.
See that.
I don't know if it would.
I think that, I think where she was complaining about was a joint, and the joint's offset, and that's a, that's a, you know, puncture weight.
It's the same curving up and down the street.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think it was perceived as more operator error than...
Yeah, well, it is. I'm sure if you hit it, it's going to pop, but it's, that's the, we bring it again.
I don't know that we've had any recent...
Oh, you have one today.
You know, when I was a city clerk, I had one complaint about it.
Was that one? Was it Chris?
No.
Somebody else?
Yeah.
She was all, we'll take a look at that area, first of all.
Yeah, I think Mark Katie was planning to go out to look at it tomorrow, because he had spoken to the clerk today as well.
Blue and, yeah, blue and, yeah, blue H. Okay, thank you. Come on down, yeah?
Just one thing. Walt Willwood on 7th, First Street, 700 block, is very happy with his new shut-off. It's no longer a foot and a half above ground, so thank you, Water Department. Good? After two years.
Oh, you had Dave's ear here last week.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all from up here, that's here from you folks. Scott, open public comment period.
At this time, the council is authorized the public comment period. If you wish to address the council, you must step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes to address the council on any matters you wish. At the end of your comment, the council may reply or choose to reply at a later date, if they so choose. Sorry.
Okay, Christine Preslaw, 1624 Seventh Avenue, and it's about Fitten Park. I'd like to know if the cameras are on there? Okay, I was there the other day, the park looks great. The 18th Street section in the back of the park looks fantastic. Unfortunately, and the park is clean, there are little bits that are around that we go and we pick up when we go. There was an apron that was installed last year, the big one that came from Sacred Heart, broken. Okay, the steering wheel was totally broken off. Many times, you go by that park in the evening, not the morning and the afternoon, it's after school. You have, you have older children, and they're very destructive in that park. I have to tell you, when you look like four little kids, and they come out with the steering wheel, you know, Chris, look, I don't know, how did they even break it off? You know, it was, it was heavy metal, and they just got it off. There's no reason, half the time, the swings are swung around, they're riding on the handicap swing, which shouldn't be allowed. Now, do we have a camera or not on the park? We have lights, but do we have cameras?
Do not believe there are any cameras on that park now.
Is there any chance that we can have the patrolmen maybe walk in, and I mean, not, not constant, just in and out in the evening, even if you want to play real ball with the kids, just to let them know you're keeping an eye on the park and it's not destroyed? I mean, the park is looking good, and people are trying to keep it up, but when they're destroying the apron, it's on it, what good is it? So that was my only thing. I think the parks are looking great, you know, and we'll do our part to help clean it up, but not when the kids are destroying it. So please, you know, see if you can get somebody, even like to walk and go in and play basketball, just check the park out, walk through it. We have enough police on the road that they can just park and just walk through it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The DPW, somewhat of an early spring DPW, was out and cleaning all the playground parks right away, so got them up pretty quickly. Now their focus is on Hudson Shore, which is a lot of the...
There used to be a camera. I don't know that new one... They're all run through the police, so that's, we'll get it to Chief Spain, and if there's a camera, he can run the camera at least. Huh?
I'm going to answer your question. Still going through.
Anyone else tonight, while these guys are having a sidebar?
I have one on 23rd, I've been thinking about for a while.
Does anyone else want to talk? Say something? Speak?
Sue, you have had a lot, you can see a lot from the playground there, Chris. Have you noticed an increase of kids?
Yes, again, actually.
What time, what time is that?
In there, 2:30, ready for school the other day, and then you were there again last night.
Anytime you go by that park, you find a lot of kids that's here, they're not all the aprons, and they're pretty abusive too, they're big kids. Can we go back with them and their families to make them eat? I know it's interesting.
We did receive calls, I believe this past week, or, and I had dispatch officers down there.
Yeah.
When is the proper time to call the police? Like what?
Anytime.
No, 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 that's not my question. My question is, if children have the right to play in the park, okay? If they're swinging on the handicap swing, should we call the police if they're older? What? That's our part of the rule.
Yeah, we really don't have another recommendation there now, so, yeah.
No, they really have to be, really vandalizing, or, you know, looking as if they're going to vandalize, be able to do it.
You may be, you may be able to just to call and recommend them to take a ride through, or send a car through. That may...
Yeah, by the time they vandalize, or they look like they're going to, it's already too late, by the time a car gets there.
So maybe just that call station, ask for a ride by.
I think in his presentation, Chief Spain said call. There's no bad ideas. Give them a call.
We have had a pretty strong presence in the school lately, so the police department and the officers do have a good relationship with the students, so if it's a lot of the students that are going in there, they already have a good relationship with them, so just then, you know, if you call them just because the kids are in there, you know, they're, they're going to go in there, and they're going to have a conversation with them, so I wouldn't hesitate to call if you think something could be happening, or may happen soon.
Okay, anyone else wants to speak? All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to go to executive session to discuss a legal matter, and we'll have a little panel here, plus I'm going to invite Paul Gold and Esquire.
I'll make a motion that we move into executive session.
I second that.
Uh, quick call the roll.
Mayor Manning.
In favor.
Councilman Petroselli.
In favor.
Councilman McGrady.
In favor.
Do you want to go to the session?